We're going to call this council workshop to order. And can we have a roll call, please?
Jerry. Steve Youngworth. Larry Wright.
Here.
James Brash.
Here.
Jason Reeves.
Here.
And Tim Doolittle.
Here.
Uh, let's see, I guess we gotta have the minutes, who of the minutes from what was it, March? My thing just moved.
Yeah, I still don't have the minutes from the April 7th workshop or council done.
Are you at March 17th on the agenda? Do you want?
Yes, those are fine. Those can go through.
Okay, a motion to approve the minutes of March 17th at 6:00 PM.
Second.
Move by right, second by where was Jerry? Okay, second by Jerry? Any discussion on those minutes? Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're down at the Lower Miller Project Discussion, warmer and current council participation. Where are we at?
Rain, you want to talk about your memo and such?
Yes, hopefully you can hear me?
Yep.
Great. Sorry, no picture. I have really, really slow, horrible internet at my house, so trying to minimize dropping the call here. And I apologize for the late delay here on the memo, pulling everything together, but I was finally able to connect with the DNR this morning, late this morning, to find out further information on the grant process and what the implications to the changes would be to the grant itself. But what I did do was lay out kind of the two questions left from the last meeting where to look at the floating piers versus the stationary piers and what that looked like. And I was trying to just relate some of the information from the last meeting and the elevations and trying to get a better understanding as to what the differences are and what you're trying to accommodate with their different systems and what that looks like. And so just kind of looking through, I know Linda had reached out, we had one talked about kind of first, an equivalent system that's been put in like a floating pier, such as the one that the city would be looking at is in from the bid project we put in in the City of New London. I know Linda shared some of that information from them as to their thoughts as to how their pier has been operating and working on the Wolf River. And then I did go through some of the information Tom Radke had provided in general when looking at the stationary pier and elevations and where to set those in relationship to the water elevations. So I did my best to pull that information together and try and give you a better understanding as to, you know, what water levels are looking like out there in the basin. And then how does the stationary pier versus the floating pier relate to them? And then kind of, you know, what's the level of service again that the city wants to provide at this particular park with those various piers? And so when looking at the memo, kind of just relating some of the depths, I know Tom had mentioned that when they put the stationary piers in, they look at a 28 to 26 inch is the top of the pier and then down from that is normal water. And so trying to look at where he was looking to position the piers in relationship to the seawalls and everything like that. From the information I have, you know, it's a pretty sizable drop into a boat at normal water of almost close to three feet of getting into your boat where a floating pier is more in the 22 inch range of access into your boat. So that just hopefully helps to understand a little bit more on the accessibility on that. And I know if stationary piers were discussed in this and the council wants to go down that path, we'd need to look closer at the elevations as to where to set those piers. But I know in the last discussion, picking that elevation is a challenge depending on the water elevations because you want them high enough that they're usable for the most usable range, which is from the 746 to the 750 elevations. Still looking at the information that I had on low water to high water and that usable boating range that we can see in the basin itself. With that, we did contact the Wisconsin DNR Grant Specialist to further explore what their thoughts and concerns might be. They just reiterated again that the Waterways Commission, who provided the grant to the city, really prefers the floating system over stationary piers, but stationary piers are grant eligible. We did contact then the DNR permitter on the project and per the plan that was submitted at the last meeting from Tom, that would still be covered under the current permit. Now, I know there was some discussion towards the end of the meeting last time about maybe taking some of the piers and turning them into tees or reconfiguring it. If that's the case, then we would need to go back to the permitter and review that plan with them to see if it still meets the current permit or if we'd have to do an amendment to the permit itself. With the pier itself and looking at that, you know, and if the council wanted to move forward with the stationary piers consideration to that, obviously Radke would need to provide us with stamped plans for the new wharf design. We would need to, MSA would need to reevaluate the grading plan to accommodate the connections to the surface areas around the boat launch. I know he had talked about that side piece along the boat launch to access it. We would recommend that because going up and over the seawall that's in front of the park shelter would be a challenge. There'd be steps involved. So we would prefer to see that piece run along the boat launch if that was the case. A couple of things that we don't have clarification on, and maybe Tom can add to this would be we didn't see and maybe didn't get to it at the last conversation was the connection of the canoe kayak launch and how that would remain accessible during those times. And I don't believe with that is just trying to understand with the overall system, when the council approved the contracts, that you wanted the cabine decking on the floating piers. And I'm not sure if that is being provided within the quote that Tom had provided at the last meeting as part of the wharf cost. And so that decking question, maybe Tom can answer as well.
You want to know?
Yeah, yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, cabin was included. And...
It was included in the $87,000? Or that, right?
Cabin in the floating. Were we talking about Kevin in the floating dock or the kayak launch or what are we talking about?
The cabin decking was approved in the project for the floating piers. So the question was, when you provided your cost for the $87,000 for the stationary pier option, was cabin decking included in that?
No.
And so then I guess I don't know if you had any further thoughts on the connection of the canoe kayak launch? I don't know if you have anything that you could share with the council? Otherwise, that's all I had on that is it seems like a straightforward change, but again, I would relate it back to, you know, really what type of level of service does the council want to look at for their their users and residents? In this case, the original project was based on the floating system. And obviously you heard comments from the community and the City of New London as to their thoughts on a floating system as well.
Yeah, so the kayak launch should be about a 20 foot ramp for the water fluctuation. That's that one in in 12 or one in 20 or whatever that is. And then getting back to the stationary pier, you said they're three foot out of the water and all of that's 26 to 28 inches. At one time you said 26 to 28, the other time it was three foot, but they're 26 to 28 inches out of the water. And that is Sterns, Fox and the Hounds and Miller Park. So both three docks are the permanent dock at Sterns, Fox and the Hounds and the boat ramp dock at Miller Park. And those are the normal height of our 26 to 28 inches off of the water. So if you like those dock heights, if that's what's been working out, that's what the height of the docks are off of normal waters, 26 to 28, 26 to 28 inches. If that's, I hope that's clear. So basically, it's just the docks that you got there now that they've been working out for you? And if they have, okay, in normal waters, 26 to 28 inches below the deck of those docks.
The question is, how does it connect to the ADA compliant kayaking system that we're putting in?
That would be separate.
So?
Right alongside of it and a 20 foot ramp. And you just go onto that ramp and that would float up and down the kayak system to meet the ADA.
So we need to add an additional ramp yet onto your prices?
No, no, we included that.
That's connecting off of the stationary side on the stationary wharf itself or are you coming from behind the seawall with it?
Any place you'd like.
Because I guess it depends because depending on the elevation that you set the stationary pier at, that ramp technically, if it's not part of the transient boat system, at a minimum, the gangway has to be 30 feet to meet code compliance for ADA. And if it's separated, then it has to meet no more than 5%.
Yeah.
Be great. At all times that you, at all times, the city would classify usable range for the canoe kayak launch. So 20 feet would probably be steep, so it'd have to get longer, most likely.
Okay, then it'd be, you know, the 25 feet or whatever it takes, it'd be five feet more than about.
Leon and Cory, I know you're on here from the Park Committee, Steve Bilkey too. You got comments about this? I know you spent a year working on what we did.
Yeah, we spent a whole year. We looked at the floating ramp and see what we wanted. And at that time, we thought it would be the best. We have not looked into this other part of it that Radke is recommending.
Right, I'm, after all this, I mean, we were, that was the way we were going was with the floating system, so that's kind of what I was looking at and kind of in agreement with was the floating system to stay with the ADA compliance and everything. So after working with Rain all this time and all the work she's put into it, that's, you know, that's kind of what we were going for, so.
I also have some concerns regarding the funding and the possibility of us having to go back before the Waterways Commission and the Joint Finance Committee. I don't know if you read in the memo, but it could result in us losing our grant, period. If they don't like what they see.
Are you talking about the whole grant?
Yes.
Do we know how long that will set us back if we have to get more permission to do this?
I thought in your memo, didn't it say something, Rain, about a year, year and a half?
Yeah, so I did speak, when speaking to Jessica this morning, she said that, you know, if there's amendments to the scope or the project overall that's been approved by the Joint Finance Committee at the state level and it has to go back to them, they have a 14 day passive period and then they have the chance to review it. And unfortunately, since you guys have received your grant, the committee has held up a lot of projects and really scrutinized project funding. And she was very concerned that if something went back to the Joint Finance Committee, it could hold the project up for a year and a year and a half in review because they are scrutinizing it and they, you're not guaranteed to get any scope amendments or changes and potentially could jeopardize the current funding. She did, she did state that today to me.
Boy, I'd say then if you guys really like the floating docks, put them out.
Again, and I'll just comment, it's probably the same thing I commented two weeks ago. And of course, I don't get to vote on this because we're going to vote on it after the swearing in of the new aldermen. So I would say the new alderman and all the sitting aldermen, we have a parks committee for a reason. We should trust their work. They've spent a lot of time and effort on this. And I don't like the fact that we're redoing all this last minute and overriding the things they've spent a lot of time and effort on. Similar to the planning commission, we have a planning commission that does a lot of that heavy lifting for us and thinks of all those questions. And so for us to then come up and want to change everything and jeopardize the grant, I think is a mistake. But just something for you guys to think about.
This is Tim here. I'm going to have to echo my same concerns that Alderman Wright just had. I do agree that we have a parks committee and we've always complained about them coming to us at the last minute with things that they want to do. And we said, no, you got to plan this stuff out. You got to work on this. You know, do it this way, do it that way. Well, now they've done what they've been told to do. Now we're going to come in and rip this whole thing apart. I am not in favor of any changes that is going to either cost us more money, do extra dredging, cost us a chance to lose our grant or anything else. I mean, we, we got to be ADA compliant. We have a lot of things that have to be met and the Parks Committee has done her due diligence. I think we got to go with their plan. Thank you.
Any other alderman, anything you want to say?
Yeah, one concern, and I know Jim is probably with me on this one too, but I guess I looked at those floating ramps and I'm a little concerned. I mean, we got a lot of cities around here with a lot of docks and nobody else besides New London has them. And I'm not an avid boater. I'm not, but I do go out a few times, but I know when we come into a boat landing, the first thing I do is grab for a pole. And with those things not having poles coming out, what do you grab onto when you come into the dock? And to me, it's a safety issue too. You grab a hold of that pole to keep yourself from going in. But yeah, I mean, I agree, we have Parks Committee for these decisions. And if it's going to jeopardize our grant, then I guess we go with what the committee came up with.
Yeah, I got a couple of things. You know, I was going to talk. If we're, if we just go by what the committees say all the time, then why do we even have these meetings? That's one thing I have to say. And as far as the floating docks and stuff, the more research I did on them, some of them look very good. Yeah, the issue I have is that the closest one we could find is in New London and yet they're supposed to be the thing that everybody's going to. Have an issue with that, but some of them I've looked at, I didn't look at any from this company. I've looked at other ones. My main concern is still the process. We have a city council for a reason too. I mean, we have a library board. If they come here next year with a a $6 million plan for a renewed library, are you just going to rubber stamp it and say, yeah, we're going to have it? No, you're going to pick it apart like we've been doing. And as far as the dredging, the thing that upsets me is this dredging was mentioned all the time. December, and this is just Parks Committee meetings, it's on the minutes. December 17th, 2018, February 25th, 2019, March 25th, 2019, April 16th, 2019, May 20th, and then all of a sudden, it's forgotten about. Well, we never knew that it needed to be dredged. It needed to be dredged from the start. The last time I've used this landing was in 1996. I checked back on my records. It was too shallow then. It's right in this, this thing here that we have that we are all giving, dredge lagoon. There's even a cost in here, $87,500. But yet they knew, nobody knows anything about it. April 2nd, this was brought to the to the meeting, the city council meeting. This was the grant application. Marina, launch dredging. You know, and now all of a sudden, well, we don't know anything about any dredging. So now we got to get more money for it? I don't like how this was done. Somewhere along the way, somebody made this a pet project and took things out without even the Parks Board knowing about it, the Park Commission. Dredging was taken out. There's nothing mentioned anywhere in any of their meetings in their minutes that said that was taken out.
That's because Jim, that that meeting that it was taken out was a council meeting and the Parks Committee was not aware of that.
I don't remember that at any, at any council meeting where that, where dredging of the channel was taken out.
Let me kind of interrupt here, guys. We're getting off track. I think maybe when you have bigger projects in the future, regardless of this or the next one, maybe you're going to have to have more more meetings and so you can pick it apart as you go through it. But right now, we're at a point where we got to do something tonight because we got to either get this project going or with the way the economy and everything is going today, they may as well pull our grant and we won't get nothing.
Well, I think that's going to happen anyway.
Well, we don't know for sure, but at least right now it sounds like it's on, so we just got to make a decision.
Is that, is that even possible, Rain? We've been granted the money.
From my understanding, when I last spoke to Jessica prior to the last meeting, she said that the money is waiting to be dispersed and that as soon as Barb sent her an email, that first, what is it, 50% of the grant can be released to the city. So it's sitting there waiting to be used. And then the rest gets released upon reimbursement of the project construction.
Through all this project and stuff, Radke, that don't interfere with what you originally bid for, right? For me? I didn't quite. I said your original. I said your original bidding and stuff, that doesn't interfere with what this project's about, does it?
Larry, we've already awarded the contracts to him and they include all of the project as is.
All right, all right. So what more information do you feel we got to have?
Well, I would just, I would be curious to hear from Jason and Steve as well, just to see what their thoughts are on this.
Yeah, I support the Park Board and their decision and the work that they put into it. And I think I remember at one time dredging was talked about and there was money put in for it. But there was comments that there wasn't a need for it by doing the process, process that they're going to do and see if that works. And then maybe down the road, if dredging has to be done, we can possibly do it then. I support the floating piers all the way around. The maximum use of our new launch is ideal. The dredging, like I've said before, after all of this stuff, I know we tried borrowing more money to be able to do it. So we just have to keep it on the foreground in the parks thoughts so we can move forward and dredge more when need or when we can, I guess. I'm going to keep that up, I guess, is the best I can say for you, Jim, that we'll try to put it into the next project.
As far as the borrowing for the dredging, you guys wanted $100,000 more in, we did up the amount that we were putting on that on that pre-sale for the borrowing. But that's maximum, so we don't have to borrow that 100,000. But the bids came in higher with our additions and everything. It came in higher than we had originally anticipated. So what was it, about 30,000, Barb?
No, the first original estimate, the bids actually came in $75,000 over those estimates. But then we also had some savings of things we took out and then we added back in some things with the cabin and stuff. So basically, we're at a $52,000 overage from what we originally started.
So originally, we were saying the project, total project before the, before the grant was 700, was, I'm sorry, 1.2 million. And then you guys authorized, let's, let's put that pre-sale at 1.3, so no more than 1.3. Then it came in at 1.238 or something like that after all of our additions and subtractions. So we're, we're over what our original estimates were after getting the bids, just going with that. But if you guys, when we, when we finally make all of our final decisions, we don't have to borrow 1.3, we can minus the grant, we can borrow the 1.238 minus the grant. So I'm concerned about dredging more than what we were talking about because we always talked about dredging where the, where the docks are and along the edge where there's some issues and at the mouth. I know we had talked about having more dredging, Jim, but I asked them to pull out as much as possible and I was told by boaters and recently on those ones I sent you, more boaters saying, hey, I just pulled up my prop a little bit and the weeds get in the way. As long as weeds aren't there, I'm good, you know? So, but my biggest concern is money right now. And if we dredge that whole thing, you know, you're looking at, first of all, there's, there's a lot of permitting and stuff that has to take place and, and, you know, is there any endangered species? Is there any contamination? You know, all of these things are going to have to, if you go beyond what we're talking about, these basic dredgings, you're going to have to look into these things which cost money. And then if we do it, there's going to be additional costs. So we're going to have to borrow above and beyond what we're even talking about right now. And maybe we need to wait and like, like Jason's saying, do this a couple of years from now if we still feel that it's a concern. Not that we'll never do it, but hey, let's, let's move forward, take out these parts that are a problem, see if there's, there's still issues because I'm hearing from the boaters, they're all like, I launched my boat there. I didn't have any problems. I don't, I don't know what to say to that. Okay, so we're going to go spend money to make sure you don't have any more problems? I don't, I don't know, so. I'm trying not to.
The boaters I know have just the opposite. They don't use the launch because they can't launch it there. You got to trim your motor up. When you trim your motor up, you lose control. You don't have as much control of your boat as you do if it's down. You're also sucking up mud into your lower unit, which isn't good for your boat. That's another reason they don't do it.
Yet not a single person that responded to me said that and I sent you every single response I got, so I don't, I don't know.
I'm talking about who responded to me. I don't know who responded to you. But it's also the people that you want to draw into to come and use these docks, they're not going to be able to get to them. Those are not boats that are launched here. Those are boats that come into town. Like when they have the party down on Scott Park or Scott Park down there, can't talk today. Those boats are not launched anywhere in the city. They come from other areas. They're not going to go into that marina if they're going to be dragon bottom. And doing dredging at a later time, if you can do it, you almost have to do it by barge because after you replace the parking lot, do all the landscaping, you don't want to tear it all up by doing it at a later time.
I just don't know where you're going to get the money for it now. I, I'm very concerned about what's going to happen after this pandemic, so. We've already seen a loss in our stocks for the marble fund. Where are we going to get the money to do even more? Yeah, I think we're going to see losses in our shared revenues very soon.
My main concern is, is the process. The process wasn't followed properly.
Yeah, I disagree with you, but we can, we can agree to disagree on that.
I'd like to have the other two new aldermen. You got anything you'd like to add to this? We've been hearing both sides a little bit for the last couple of weeks.
Well, the only thing I have is I, I was a boater years ago and just a comment on Jim. Most people, if the activity here is here in town, they're not going to probably launch in town. The whole purpose is to boat there. You know, I mean, we always boated away from home or into a place, so I don't see where the concern for launching in town for an activity in town is, is why launch and not use your boat? You know, that's why I guess my, my point is. But other than that, yes, with all the work that's been going on and at this late stage, I would tend to go with what is been put in place.
The other one?
Well, when I look at what I've seen over the last year, I do agree that the dredging was definitely brought up in the city council meetings, at least from a standpoint of an opportunity to improve upon. I do agree that, that dredging was definitely brought up in the city council meetings, at least from a standpoint of an opportunity to improve upon what we have. In the parks meetings, it didn't come out as a priority, I think that the group did a good job justifying the design choices there. From a usability standpoint, I definitely agree that the floating docks do make it a little bit more difficult to get boats docked and then boats into and out of the water. I was down at Miller Park this week, kind of watching a couple of boats get pulled out of the water, the kids were enjoying it. It's, it does seem to have kind of an odd current that pushes the boats around and there's now not anything for the, there's, there's a potential that there wouldn't be the same dock to get out of the water that we have currently, which does have the tall posts there. But I'm not totally familiar with that part of the design, but it, it would seem that a fixed dock at the boat landing would be better than a floating dock. But I agree, it's very difficult to make a change this late in the game when you do have a very good plan going forward.
Okay, so is there anything else needs to be discussed, because it's from what I've been hearing, it sounds like it's, everybody kinda wants to move forward with the plan that's here, right? Let's go around the table and find out if you're, if you're for the plan, say yes, if you're not, say no. Bro call.
Todd, Jerry?
Can't hear you.
Nod. Or, or, or up and down.
He's muted. Now it can hear me?
Yep.
Yep, reluctantly saying hi.
Steve Youngworth? Larry Wright?
Hi.
Jim Brash?
Oh.
Jason Reeves?
Yes.
Tim Dillito?
Yes. Okay, it's, the, the project is moving forward.
Moving forward to the council.
Yeah, well, yeah. As far as the workshop goes, yeah.
Yes, yes.
I guess I'm kinda concerned, Lud, do we really even need another motion, because we've already approved the contracts with the bid awards as the project was at the last meeting?
At the last meeting, you approved the contract, the bid award, and this suggestion that we consider stationary docking, not floating docking, was just a discussion item?
That's what I'm kinda
It was, it was on the workshop, Lud, we had this discussion in the workshop, the council said we want more information.
Okay, so
We made a vote to get more information.
Did we put it on the agenda or not, Linda, you and I talked about that, is it on?
That, that is not on the agenda, is it?
Okay, fair enough.
It, it was last time.
No, that's fine, and if we moved it forward and the consensus of the current council and I think the new council is, it does not rise to the level of reconsideration.
So should we ask for a IRNA from Todd and Cindy as well? As far as this goes?
I think only in the context of would they want to object to moving this project forward. Not that it's a vote, so essentially, the old decision, the decision, the existing decision moves forward because there is not
Not a change.
Enough support to overturn it. So yes, if the two new council representatives would simply indicate whether they'd want to have further discussion of this item.
Cindy, are you looking for further discussion, or are you okay to move forward as it, as the bid was awarded?
I am okay to move forward as it was awarded.
Todd?
I would agree to move forward.
So I think it's safe to say the decision's already been made by the common council, we took a timeout, but from a legal process, somebody would have had to move to reconsider. And it, it doesn't appear that there are the votes to move that to the full common council. So the decision to, as the contract has already been awarded, shall continue.
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions about that? Tony? On the current situation moving forward, we have the, what kind of docks are they again, could you just clarify one more time, please?
Project was bid out with the floating docks and piers and the kayak canoe launch. So that is what was awarded at last week's meeting.
The common council awarded it on that basis. And then they called a timeout just to see if there was any, any sense of changing their direction. And now this evening, we've, we have determined that there isn't support for changing that direction, other than a council representative or two.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I guess we move on to, we got the the virus policies, you wanna bring that up, Linda?
Um, yeah, first of all, Julie, the only real change I'm seeing on the latest stay-at-home orders is that you guys can, as far as city business, that you guys can now do curb again, are you gonna do that? Gonna turn off your mute?
Yes, that's the way we understand it, Friday, we can start doing our curb side deliveries. So actually, for us to get up and running again, we're going to really start pushing it for Wednesday. So we can get everything in place with the requested items that people have on their hold lists and just getting the system up and going. So we're still working out some kinks, but we're hoping by Wednesday we'll be getting back into that.
From what I'm hearing, you should have them in hold for seventy-two hours when they're returned, before you put them back on the shelves?
Right, everything that comes into the library building gets quarantined. I've been hearing forty-eight hours, but
According to a meeting I was at today, the library association, whatever it is, I don't know, WL something, I don't know. They're, they're saying seventy-two.
Okay, it could be, I've been hearing actually three different amounts, so whatever they end up with is, yeah.
Yeah.
We have to quarantine everything.
They don't think the virus lasts that long on the books, they just are recommending that extra time to be the seventy-two hours.
Right, yeah, and we have, all along, we've been quarantining everything, so.
So that's one thing, the other thing was, we met twice on this loan committee. And after discussions, oh, I, correct me if I'm wrong, Jim and Larry and Steph, Steve, we were talking about having a loan available for businesses. We're talking about having at this point fifty thousand dollars that we would loan out twenty-five hundred dollars maximum to each business at a zero percent interest rate for five years. See how that goes and then authorize an additional fifty thousand dollars if should we need it. Talking about doing it on a basis of, first, we'll start with the businesses that actually had to close, your barber shops, those type of things. They had to close their doors, obviously, they have no income coming in, so check with them first. Make it a little easier to deal with and then, then go to the downtown businesses and then go to the outskirts businesses and then go to the industrial businesses and find out if there is additional needs out there, which we don't think there are, but who knows? Because even though they're open, they may not be at full capacity and there may be some concerns, but but leaving it totally for the purpose of rent and potentially mortgage, I don't know exactly how we left that, and utilities. Not for payroll purposes or anything else, this would be strictly for those two purposes, utilities and rent. So did I do everything right there, guys?
Yep, I think you did it right, our main concern is if we're gonna have a program where you help them out with their, maybe their monthly rent payment or their, and their utilities for one of each.
Payroll-wise, they have that PPP program that's through the federal and I know, I know at least one or two of them that have applied and received those funds. And I know there's additional monies being asked for and, and, and there are other places that they can get funds, it's just a lot more complicated, so we're just trying to help in addition to those, so thoughts on that from the other council members?
Just for clarification, we're talking about a promissory note without collateral?
Yeah.
Okay. Zero percent interest?
Yeah.
No payments due?
Five years.
Five, at the end of five years, demand note, so essentially, it's a promissory demand note.
Right, with that, you know, you would have the ability to do a small claims. I understand there might be businesses that go out of business.
Personal guarantee. Personal guarantee included.
If that's, if that's simple enough to do.
It is.
Okay.
Very simple.
And then, and then with that, the ones that are in business here, if, if we don't wanna pursue it in that direction, they can't get a permit without, if they owe the city money, that's already a thing, so we can always say you can't get your liquor license or whatever if you owe the city money and can kinda collect it that way, but, but the hope is, you know, with the personal guarantee that he's talking about and so on, that at least they pay us a little each year and, and we get that money back, but it's a risk.
Okay, it, it, the five-year term might be a little long.
Yeah.
It might be a little long, I mean, like you said, at the end of five years, they may be long gone.
You can make it any number you want, I stole that from somebody else, so.
Okay, that's fine.
Three years, I don't
I'm not telling you what to make it either. Eventually, it ends up being a grant in some sense anyways, but I'm just clarifying. You wait five years, you, you may have some difficulty and you don't accept payments on a note. Statute of limitations is six years, so you have to move really quick after the five years.
Or we could say, you know, after a year, you gotta pay us monthly, one twelfth of it, you know, or something like that.
That, that probably would make more sense, or after two years or whatever, make, then call a payment due. A payment schedule after two years.
Yeah, Lud, some of our discussion was the maybe start all at twenty-five hundred dollars. And if, depending on how many people apply, it might be around two.
Yeah.
Things get real bad.
Yeah, I like, I like the twenty-five hundred dollar figure as well, I think your risk factor is not as great. All I'm clarifying is I like Linda's suggestion and perhaps after two years, principal payments. Principal payments after two years, you've got a sense of these people are either gonna be involved in paying the city back or they're not, and then you decide whether you wanna pursue them. A personal guarantee just simply says you're not just taking a LLC or a corporation, which if they go belly up, you get zero, and you're not taking any UCC filings against any collateral and you're not taking any interest in any mortgage or property, which I'm fine with, but I just think Linda's suggestion that after two principal payment be made, you know, a certain percent, I like that. So two years, I like the two-year window.
If we do that for the two-year thing and then don't require repayment, are, are we gonna have to waive every year their ability to get licenses and such because they do owe the city money?
Yeah, that's why I think the two-year makes sense too, Barb. You know, that's why you wait the two, you know, you give them two years, you, they don't owe you a nickel until after two years are up. At that point in time, principal payment is due, you pick what that principal payment is, call that out in the note.
Can that caveat be put into the policy so that it's in writing somewhere that we can't charge them?
Right.
Yeah, zero percent interest.
They don't actually owe it at that point, so we don't have to waive it, it's not owed, so.
Right, right, up to the two-year period.
All right, just so I got this clear, then it's fifty thousand dollar fund with up to twenty-five hundred dollars per business at zero interest for a five-year loan. After a two-year period, they're required to do a thirty-six month amortization and equalized payment of the loan, or no?
Yep.
Forget the five-year thing, if they came up, after two years.
After two, right, thirty-six months left.
Oh, okay.
Oh, Lud and I are
The second year, you're gonna amortize.
You're saying thirty-six months and I'm saying over twelve months, which
Yeah, I The last thirty-six months of the loan, you're saying five years, you're giving them five years to pay the money back, but you're telling them for the first two years, they pay nothing. After the second year, they start paying principal, which is a thirty-six month amortization with zero percent interest is three years into the twenty-five hundred, so twenty-five hundred divided by thirty-six.
I was saying, I was saying over, after two years, they have twelve months, so it basically went down to three.
Oh, you wanted to, you wanted to get it done to three-year, okay.
It's a kind of, it's a pretty good chunk of payment every month, that's a little over a hundred dollars.
You guys, yeah, I, I just Whatever you guys wanna do.
Yeah, this is Larry, I think five years is too long, I like the three-year thought. No, we'll, we'll do no payments until forty-eight months or twenty-four months is up, so they have two years and they have to pay fifty percent of it back and then a year later, they gotta pay the other fifty percent, so I would make it a three-year loan or a grant or whatever, we're saying, free for the first two years, no payment, then you owe fifty percent and on the anniversary of year three, you owe the other fifty, just my thoughts.
I'm fine with that too, again, statute of limitations, calling in the personal guarantee, all that stuff.
That also eliminates us collecting.
You can forgive it, but give yourself some options.
Jamie would probably appreciate that, that would eliminate all the payments on a monthly basis.
Yeah, that's fine.
Other people thoughts?
Sounds good to me.
I agree, sounds good. Yeah, I like Larry's idea.
That was easiest for bookkeeping, I guess, would be my opinion.
Larry's idea is easy bookkeeping. Pay half, it's due, you fail to pay, then it gets back to Barb's question, then they're in default, they don't get their licenses, they got some problems, they gotta pay that half back.
Basically, we're only waiving that for the first two years that they don't have to pay, because
Right, you're giving them zero percent interest, you're giving them the money.
After the third year, if they don't make their first fifty percent payment, then we can deny license.
Correct, after two.
All right, thank you.
I like it.
So this will be, we'll, we'll put it as part of our COVID discussion on the regular council agenda, so there'll be a, there'll be a vote to bring this forward on the, on this council agenda, so.
Sounds good.
Um, can't really think of anything else that's changed since last time, so. I know that the governor did come out with a back to base, I don't, back to something, I don't know what it's called.
Back.
What is it called?
Badger bounce back.
Bounce back, yes, that, that's going to determine how we open. They are waiting for us to start to see a drop in numbers, that hasn't happened yet, we've been fairly stable in the numbers of the people that are infected. We've seen some raises in numbers up in the Green Bay area, Milwaukee's doing a little bit better, Wauwato's is up again. So until all the numbers start to drop, that's probably not gonna happen. So the earliest would be two weeks from now, we'd go to phase one. There is a, a lot of discussion amongst all the cities, what are we doing about swimming pools and recreation? I know our baseball program pretty much said they're not gonna run, the parent organization. Our swimming pool, we're moving forward with getting it prepared. It's not looking really good because it's definitely not a phase one item, it's it's probably going to be phase two or phase three, you know, can we, can we put a bunch of people into one area? And our expenses versus our revenues on that, we already, we already lose eighty thousand dollars a year on the swimming pool. If we start having the lifeguards working and we can't put more than ten people in a pool, yeah, you know, you're gonna have, you're gonna have lack of revenues that go with this, so your pool is gonna be more than an eighty thousand dollar cost to the city. You're not gonna have the revenues coming in, so it depends, everybody's just sitting back and waiting, but Steve Katie is going ahead and preparing the pool and we'll just sit back and wait, but with that, the lifeguards are being hired, but they all understand they might not work. Some of them can't get lifeguarding classes that they need because the Y is closed. So our manager from last year has said that he would run a lifeguard class, he has that ability to run a lifeguard class, he has the certifications to do He has that ability to run a lifeguard class, he has the certifications to do that. And so when we get to that point, he could actually get them up to speed. Just don't know if and when, so.
Uh, Linda, I have a question on that. As far as the pool, can Steve put his, uh, wish list or dream list together, just in case it doesn't open, maybe we can get some stuff that has been put off, done?
Yeah, I think, I think he's got it together, so that wouldn't be a problem to, to bring forward. He knows what needs to be done, but.
Just something to think about.
Yeah.
I want to welcome the new council representatives. I've got to run to another meeting. Thank you for letting me boogie.
Well, do we have a council photograph like right now or what?
Quick.
It's funny you say that though.
Another day.
I was, could we, if everybody could just send in their headshot or something that they want used on the webpage? That would be good. Oh, Tim would shake your head.
Take a picture really quick.
Send in something kind of recent or something.
Well, thank you, Lud.
Yep, take care, guys. We'll, we'll be in touch.
Hi.
Okay, uh, is that, take care of what we need for this meeting now?
I think so, so we'll just, uh.
Okay, I just have a question for you, Linda. Linda, I have a question for you.
Yeah.
Can we just go to mute for now and then, uh, without going back into this website or do we have to go all?
I'll just put the recording on pause, nobody talk business. And then we'll just, we'll just all be muted until the meeting starts in five minutes, seven minutes.
Okay, all right, very good.
Bathroom break.
Motion for adjournment.
Don't move.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Okay, meeting is adjourned and we'll reconvene at seven.
Hey, Linda, I got a question for you, yours.
I have a back recording, Larry.
Okay, we're back recording? Is that what you said?
Yes.
Okay, uh, is everybody on that needs to be on for the council meeting?
One, two.
It's Jason Reeves.
I think he's reconnecting. Jason's back. Got Tim, got Larry. Jim, Steve. I think I got everybody.
Okay. Okay, I will call this council meeting to order. It's a big meeting, everybody. The next invitation to pledge allegiance would be by Alderman Wright.
All right, uh, let us pray. Lord, look kindly on we who govern so that the integrity and security of our community may always endure under your protection. In Jesus's name, amen.
States of America.
Okay, cool. All right, I just gotta check my screen here for a second. All right, I have a proclamation I'd like to address. Mr. Franski, I've got a little thing I'd like to say about you.
Hello?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Yes, I can.
Okay, this, okay. Uh, this is a memorial proclamation. Whereas Leon Franski has been a member of the park committee for 28 years, April 1992 through April 2020, with participation in the decision-making process that resulted in, in many park improvements, including the new Amaro Family Aquatic Center, the National Exchange Pavilion, the River Walk, the Park Comprehensive Plans and many other park grants, additions and enhancements. And whereas Leon Franski has been a member of the planning commission for 21 years, April 1999 through April 2020, helping to advise the city on zoning and planning for the entire city, reviewing subdivisions, creating a comprehensive plan and assisting citizens with their land divisions or land developments and their divisions and annexations. And whereas Leon Franski has been the municipal judge for seventeen and a half years, September 2002 through April 2020, hearing and deciding on municipal ordinance violations and assisting area use and making better decisions by using his past years as a teacher as the experience necessary to encourage and develop good character and guide them into being productive community members. And whereas Leon Franski is retired from the park committee, planning commission and his duties of municipal judge on April 21st, 2020. Now therefore, be it resolved that the common council of the city of Amaro, Wauwato County, Wisconsin, hereby thanks Leon Franski for his dedication to the city of Amaro for his many years of service to the community and for his commitment to making Amaro a better place to live by contributing to the education of the youth, the safety of our citizens, the beautification of our parks and the planning and love of the city as a whole. Be it further resolved that the city of Amaro hereby rededicates and names the Small Scott Pavilion Shelter, the Leon Franski Pavilion and place a sign upon such pavilion in honor of Leon Franski. Uh, sign, sign, Mayor Larry Wright and dated April 21st, 2020. Council members are Todd Yari, Steve Youngworth, Larry Wright, James C. Brash, Jason Avery's and Tim Doolittle. Congratulations.
Well, I, I want to thank you. It's, it's been a pleasure serving the city and I enjoyed every bit of it. I, I can't thank you enough for doing something like that. I'm, I'm gonna miss Amaro tremendously. Uh, it's been a great 45 years living here and, um, I, I enjoyed every minute of it. I hope that I can come back and enjoy a few other things. So I'd like to thank, thank the mayor and the county council for, for doing that. It's, it, it means a lot to me. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You made me cry, Leah.
Had to wipe my eyes too.
Gonna miss you from the park.
Yeah. I'm gonna miss the whole sleeve.
Linda, can you bring that picture up and show them what that sign will look like?
You see it?
Wow, that is nice. Thank you.
Upside down here. I don't know what it looks like there.
Or did you know about it?
Didn't know, what am I looking at?
Can you put the sign?
Steve, can you put it up again?
Oh my gosh, look at.
It's of course bigger than that, Leah.
I was gonna say, which outhouse does that go in?
It's actually above the side entrance to the pavilion. I had Steve and the guys put it up today. But you guys can go for a walk.
Yes, we will, we will. Oh, that's really nice. Oh, very nice. Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks again.
Welcome. Okay, uh, I just got a little something I'd like to say before we get to the oaths. I guess I would just like to say thank you to our city attorney Lud, Linda, our city administrator and our staff, our alderman, our police chief and staff, the library. Thank you. It's been an honor and a privilege serving with you these last four years. Thank you. Uh, Alderman Wright, you got anything you'd like to say?
Yeah, I'd also like to thank everyone for, uh, the last four years for being an alderman. I want to thank the mayor, I want to thank all the, the council members, Todd and Steve, Tim, Steve, um, Jason and Jimmy. I really enjoyed, uh, my time working with all of you, even when we disagreed, it didn't become disagreeable. So I appreciate all of that. I appreciate Linda and Barb and, and Steve and, um, Joe Schuster and Stephanie and all of the city employees. So thank you, guys. It's been an honor and privilege to serve and I'll miss you all.
We'll miss you too, Larry.
Okay, I guess we will go to the newly elected officials.
Well, first I wanna, I wanna say both to, both of the Larrys, now I gotta do two Tods now instead of two Larrys, but you guys have been definitely wonderful to work with and, and we're gonna miss you all very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Municipal judge. Oh.
Yeah.
Municipal judge, uh, we're gonna have, uh, the swear, swearing of new elected officials.
Okay, who do you want to go first?
Uh, let's start with Municipal Judge Kathy Katy.
Okay. Is Kathy there?
I am.
Okay. I'm gonna read something and I'm gonna have you read it back to me. Uh, so when I stop, please read back for what I said. And, um, I'll have you just right now, raise your right hand. You're not on my screen, so.
I'm there.
Okay, it says, uh, first of all, I, Kathy Katy, having been elected to the office of municipal judge.
I, Kathy Katy, having been elected to the office of municipal judge.
But have not yet entered upon the duties, therefore.
But have not yet entered upon the duties, therefore.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office to the best my ability.
And will faithful, faithfully discharge, I'm sorry, Leon, can you repeat that?
Faithfully discharge the duties of said office to the best my ability.
And faithfully discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
Oh, help me God.
Congratulations and good luck to you.
Thank you, thank you. I've got some big shoes to fill, Leon. Thank you so much for your help.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Kathy.
And now if we can move on. Now if we can move on to the mayor, Steve Youngworth.
Okay. Steve, can you raise your right hand, please? I, Steve Youngworth, having been elected to the office of mayor.
Hi, Steve Youngworth. I've been selected, elected to the office of mayor.
But have not yet entered upon the duties thereof.
But yet not have entered the duties of thereof.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability.
And will faithfully discharge the said duties.
Of said office to the best of my ability.
Of said office to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
Help me God.
Congratulations and good luck.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Steve.
Yeah, congratulations, Steve.
Yep.
This is, uh, the old mayor. This is the old mayor. I just want to say something quick. Steve, I now pass the gavel on to you as mayor of Amaro. Congratulations and you well deserving of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Did I get the big one?
You keep them in line, Steve.
And now if we can move on to the new council members. Uh, council member Jason Reeves.
Okay, Jason, we raise right hand. I, Jason A. Reeves.
I, Jason.
Elected to the office of council member.
I, Jason A. Reeves, having been elected to the office of council member.
But have not yet entered upon the duties thereof.
But have not yet entered upon the duties thereof.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations and good luck.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Jason.
I just want to say one thing that you guys probably don't know, but Jason was a student council president. I, I won't tell you how many years ago that was because I was the student council advisor at that time. And I knew that Jason was gonna be famous someday and now there he is, council member.
Ten years now.
It's been 10 years, oh boy. Congratulations, Jason.
Thank you.
And next, council member Cindy Ostrander.
Yes.
Hey Cindy, can you raise your right hand, please? I, Cindy Ostrander, having been elected to the offices, council member.
I, Cindy Ostrander, have, having been elected to the office of council member.
But have not yet entered upon the duties thereof.
But have not yet entered upon the duties thereof.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations and good luck for your first term.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Cindy.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard. And then finally, oh, for the last council member, Todd Simromantic.
Okay, Todd, raise your right hand, please. I, Tom Simromantic, have been elected to the office of council member.
I, Todd Simromantic, have been elected to the office of council member.
But have not yet entered upon the duties thereof.
But have not yet entered upon the duties thereof.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations and good luck to you in your first turn.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Todd.
If I may just say one more thing, please. Uh, I'm riding off into the sunset and, uh, I wish the new mayor and the new council all the luck in the world and, uh, good tidings and see ya. I'm signing off.
Bye, Larry.
Bye, Larry. Thank you, Larry.
Good luck, everyone.
Bye, Larry, Larry.
Bye, Larry.
How do you can turn it off and go? How about you can turn it off and go cry?
They've probably got a party planned.
I'm gonna log you off, Larry.
They'd invite us.
I need to kick him out.
There's Jim.
Okay, are we all set now for, to move on? Next is roll call.
Roll call. We have Todd Yari.
Here.
Cindy Ostrander.
Here.
Todd Simromantic.
Here.
James Brash.
Here.
Jason Reeves. And Tim Doolittle.
All present. Next would be approval of the agenda. Motion to do so.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion on the agenda?
I have a question. It was mentioned that some things were added. Is that what was added, or was that to the workshop?
That was for the workshop, Jason.
Okay.
There were, there were additions of the police department since Friday. I don't know if you noticed.
Oh, yeah, those two were on there, and also the directory was finished for the appointments of the new council members, so I attached that. I believe it's there.
Well, you might have seen those. Did you see those before we started?
I didn't see the appointments. But I, I'll find it.
And if it ain't there, let me know. I can read through them as we get to that point.
Yeah, we can read them all for you.
It was really difficult to upload, because it's such a big file.
Any more questions on the minutes? If not, a motion to approve.
I will.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or say no. Motion carried. So does send statements to the council. Anybody out there that has anything related to, I think it's the meeting tonight, right? My law is what they can talk about.
Yes.
Well, they could talk about anything they want. We just can't respond unless it relates to the meeting tonight.
Okay. So is there anybody out there that has anything to say?
I do have an update from the town of Amro related to the ATV routes, and then I have a question for Chief Schuster. So.
Your, your name and address, please.
Todd Simromantic, 1751 Jamie Drive. So, um, the town of Amro decided to pass the two ATV routes that would interconnect us to the town of Rushford. But there is a little bit of confusion, because when the sign's replaced by the city, they replaced all the way to Ginnow. And legally, we should have asked the county if we could use the 55 mile per hour section of County Road F, and I'm not sure that that happened. So I would just like some clarification from Chief Schuster if that happens. And if it didn't happen, then we would have to ask the city, and if it did happen, then the town would be approved to just connect to Ginnow at the end sign.
So what are you actually asking?
So, did you go to the county board and approve usage, get approved usage of the 55 mile per, portion of F after Poygenav ends, but to the town line at Ginnow?
To this, we put to the city limits.
Yeah, so the, the sign currently goes right to Ginnow, and I'm not, I'm confused as to where.
I'd have to look to see where that sign's actually placed, because I know Joe Carpenter put them up.
Okay, so I think we just have to, either Brian now has to ask for county permission to use that short section, or the city would have to ask.
The city, the city did not map that section, Todd. So we only mapped to the city limits, so that should be where the last sign is.
Okay.
I'll drive over to tomorrow and look at where that last sign is.
Okay. I can follow up the offline, too. I just, there is a bit of confusion between the town and the city now that who's gonna ask.
Have they, have they talked about, they are going to pass that?
They have an ordinance written, and they approved it yesterday, so I wanted to provide the council an update that it did happen.
Okay.
And I think the question's gonna go out to the county now, soon, but I'm not sure who it's gonna come from yet.
Okay.
So I was a little bit confused on that, but hopefully before it goes in the newspaper, we at least know what the question was asked.
Okay.
But obviously, it will not be accessible until the signs are posted. We'll have to work on that next. The, the town will.
Okay, anybody else, questions about the ATV route, or anything else that anybody else would likes, anybody else would like to bring up something?
Good evening, mayor. This, oh, mayor, this is David Asmussen from, from MSA Professional Services. We have a public hearing scheduled for tonight, and I just noticed that the notice that was put in to newspaper for the Zoom conference ID had a different number than what was on your agenda for tonight. The Zoom conference ID number that was, I believe, published in the newspaper, it was in the notice that was 406-12607228. And I tried calling that number at seven o'clock, and there was, indicated that there was no meeting started at this point in time.
I can pull it, I can pull that Zoom meeting up and see if anybody's on there.
Okay, if you want to do that, Linda, because technically, you know, if that's the ID number that was published, if people are calling in to that number, then, you know, we have to listen to them. I doubt very much if people are calling in, but if that's the, if you want to check on that.
Let me see if I can.
Because I, yeah. So we can proceed with the meeting, and I'll stay on until the public hearing, if you want to confirm that, Linda.
All right. Do you have that meeting ID number again? Yeah, that's before I was having problems using my personal number. I thought we were gonna use it all the time, and then we decided not to. Dang, I forgot all of that.
Okay.
Okay. It won't let me do it, because I'm in the middle of this one.
Oh, okay. Yeah, when I called in, it said we needed a.
See if I can log out.
Organizer needed, yeah.
Well, why don't we go around that until Linda comes back on, and then we'll know whether it's posted or not.
Right. Very good. Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else out there that would like to speak up at this time? If not, we'll move on to nominations of elections for council president. The floor is open for nominations for council president. Not all at once, no.
Just so you know, you did skip the minutes.
No, I thought we approved those.
We did, okay. The, I skipped it then.
It's okay.
Nominations.
I'll nominate Jason.
I'll second that. Motion, or any other nominations? If not, a motion to clause the nominations for council president.
So moved.
Second.
And now a motion to approve for the council president. We need a motion for that?
Yes, you definitely do.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Might want to ask Jason if he's willing to do it.
I'll accept. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Todd Yari.
Hi.
Cindy Ostrander.
Hi.
Todd Simromantic.
Hi.
James Brash.
Hi.
Jason Reeves.
Abstain.
Tim Doolittle.
Motion carried. Congratulations, Jason.
Thank you.
Next would be election of appointment of representative to the planning commission. This is usually the chairman of the parks committee, so Jason will be in that position, so we'll need approval for him to be planning commission representative for the council.
I have no objection.
That'll have to be a motion.
Okay, got it. Jim.
We have a second?
Second.
Who is the second?
Todd.
Thank you.
Any discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Todd Yari.
Hi.
Cindy Ostrander.
Hi.
Todd Simromantic.
Hi.
James Brash.
Hi.
Jason Reeves.
Abstain.
And to Tim Doolittle.
Motion carried. Next is appointments of, oh, council confirmation of mayoral committee appointments.
Okay, should we just go through these now? Does everybody find it, or?
I did not find it.
Okay. So. We'll first get down to the liaisons to departments and committees. Everybody may want to jot down when you're named as a liaison to a certain committee. So hopefully you have pens and paper. The public safety liaison is going to be Todd Simromantic. Public works liaison, Todd Yari. Utility liaison, Tim Doolittle. Parks committee liaison, Jason Reeves. Finance and personnel liaison, Cindy Ostrander. Community services liaison, Cindy Ostrander. Amro school district liaison, Jim Brash. Future Amro liaison, Steve Youngworth. Amro area development corporation, James Brash. Business improvement district, Steve Youngworth. And library liaison, Cindy Ostrander.
We need a motion to approve those.
We can wait till we're all done with all of it and just approve it all as one directory. So if anybody, if anybody has any objections during any of these, please speak up, and then we can deal with it as we go.
I have a question.
Sure.
How much time I heard at the library?
You are on the school district liaison. And the library is Cindy Ostrander.
Okay.
You got a new job.
My new job is the public works?
Todd, you are public works, yes.
Thank you.
And for the new people, you can give us a call here at City Hall, and we'll explain to you what the liaison position does and what's expected of you in that regard, okay? Next is the emergency government coordinators. We have chief of police, Joe Schuster, mayor, Steve Youngworth, public works director, Steve Bilkey, utility chief operator, Steve Katie, fire chief, Jay Tree Levin, communications coordinator, Stephanie Hawkins, city administrator, Linda, and myself. And then we have the police discipline committee. We have three voting members, which are Eileen Simromantic, Robert Walther, Roger Manick, and the police chief, Joe Schuster. The mayor and both city administrator are ex officio members of that committee. Planning commission, the chairman is Steve Youngworth. Voting member resident, Steve Franz, David Weiss, Herb Helwig. And as the parks chair and planning commission is Jason Reeves. Voting member, public works director, Steve Bilkey. And then there's also the city administrator, the city attorney, John Blaisel, and the building inspector as an advisory, Martin Johnson, sit on that commission. Parks committee, there are seven voting members. Let's go back to planning for a second, Steve. We are one resident member short for planning commission. So if we, if we can try to find someone yet. And the next one is parks committee, and on that committee, we are two resident members short. There may, I have someone who was interested in the planning commission. I don't know if you want me to put them in or not, that is Cory Anderson. Yes, if you're still looking for someone for planning, he would be interested.
Okay, we'll talk about that later.
Okay. Parks committee, we need two more members, two resident members. One to replace Lynn, who determined not to fill her the remainder of hers, and then there's one more that needs to be filled. And then we have Pete Hennis, Michelle Jesky, Cory Anderson, Mike Hess, Steve Bilkey as the public works director, the OAA liaison, Gary Haring, myself as ex officio member, city administrators, ex officio, and also the co-pool managers this year are Jared Leader and Maria Langgraf, and the pool operator, Steve Katie. That comprises the parks committee. So if anyone knows anybody who might be interested in being on that committee, please let us know. Library board. The school district representative on the library board is Stacy Wright. The alderperson representative is Cindy Ostrander. Voting member is Margaret Fransky, Barbara Hodgson, Janet Abelon, Nicole Bond, and Ann Reese. The county board member, Tom Ellis, also sits on that committee with the ex officio members, Julie Stobie, library director, and city administrator, Linda. Next, we're on to the board of review. There's four voting members of the board of review. The board of review is comprised of the chairman, which is the mayor, and that would be Steve Youngworth, and then all of the sitting council members are alternates and members. Right now, as members, we have Todd Yari, James Brash, and Todd Simromantic. The voting alternates are Cindy Ostrander, Jason Reeves, and Tim Doolittle. City assessor is also on there at Nick Marks, myself, city clerk, and city administrator as ex officio member. Zoning board of appeals has five voting members. First is Mary Burnt, Donna Golke, Darren Tree Levin, Herb Helwig, and Glenn Volp. With ex officio members, Linda and myself, and the city attorney, John Blaisel, sits on that board as advisory. The business improvement district board. We are needing one more member for that. It needs to be the OADC liaison business member, and it is a voting member, so we're looking for one more from there, Steve. Chamber liaison is Jennifer Jordan. And then alderperson representative is Tim Doolittle. Business owner voting member is Bob McKay. And another business voting member is Kim Anderson, Roger Manick, and Rick Crystal. And community development director, Stephanie Hawkins, sits advisory on that board. The fire board is basically comprised of all of the aldermen, with three being active voting members, whoever's able to come, and then the other three act as alternates. And the mayor is the chair of the fire board joint meeting. The alderpersons that are set for this year are Todd Simromantic, Cindy Ostrander, and Todd Yari. And then the alternates would be Jason Reeves, Tim Doolittle, and James Brash. Board of health is made up of all of the council members as a committee of a whole. City administration offices, you don't need that information, so I think that's it. The rest of these are just directory information from staff. So I would entertain a motion to. So I would entertain a motion to approve the appointed. Committee and Board Members.
So can we have a motion?
I make a motion.
Who moved?
Cindy.
Yes.
Moved and seconded by who?
Todd.
Any more discussion, any discussion?
I did email everybody a copy, so you should have a copy of it in your email. Just now.
There will be another person needed on the library board. And I do have, I have an idea for somebody. I'll give it to Julie and Steve later.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Any more discussion? If not, roll call, please.
How Jerry?
Hi.
Cindy Ostrander?
Hi.
Todd Simromantic?
Hi.
James Brash?
Hi.
Jason Reeves? And Tim Doolittle.
Hi.
Motion carried. Next is appointment of the Army Herald as a city newspaper. Need a motion for that.
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Any discussion? If not, roll call, please.
How Jerry?
Hi.
Cindy Ostrander?
Hi.
Todd Simromantic?
Hi.
James Brash?
Hi.
Jason Reeves?
Hi.
And Tim Doolittle.
Hi.
Motion carried. Next is appointment of Lud. Wertz and John Bezos as City Attorney. Come on. Moved by Todd?
Second.
I can buy. Tim, any discussion?
So everybody new understands, we have Lud does all of our council meetings and most of our general. Law questions. Planning Commission is run by John Blaisel and he also does all of the court. Legalities for us. We pay Lud, he pays John, so that's how it works.
Okay, any more discussion? If not, roll call, please.
How Jerry?
Hi.
Cindy Ostrander?
Hi.
Todd Simromantic?
Hi.
James Brash?
Hi.
Jason Reeves?
Hi.
And Tim Doolittle.
Right.
Motion carried. Next is appointment of official depositories.
And we have fortified bank. Of course, our local bank, local government investment pool, which is where all cities in Wisconsin hold. Larger amounts of money than are able to be. They call it when.
They're not quite as accessible.
Well, no, I'm trying to think, they back it up, you know, so, so you don't lose the money if, if the bank closes. Yeah, anyway collateral, if they don't have enough collateral, we put it over there. If they have better interest rates, we put in the local government investment pool, so it gets wired back and forth. And then RBC Wealth Management is a place that we will buy CDs through, so they find us other banks to hold money in, so that we have enough collateral. In each of these separate banks, so we can't go over a certain dollar amount without having to go to another bank.
Okay, any more discussion?
And I need a motion and a second.
I make a motion.
Motion by Cindy?
Second.
No discussion anymore. If not, roll call, please.
How Jerry?
Hi.
Cindy Ostrander?
Hi.
Todd Simromantic?
Hi.
James Brash?
Hi.
Jason Reeves?
Hi.
And Tim Doolittle.
Hey.
Motion carried. Then another thing is, there's a seminar coming up, Local Government 101. Barbie, wanna say some words on that?
That is a training, it's usually an all day training. For new members of council and may, and or mayors or any other government official. It's got some really good, interesting workshops and information for you on how to participate. You know, what to look for in certain things, so I would highly recommend that new people actually attend. Hopefully, I would probably go for the one in September. Just to be on the safe side to register, but.
Barb, I did see that they're gonna do a webinar.
Are they really? Okay, I was hoping that that would come up.
The one in Ashkasha, which is the 29th, I think it's a Friday.
Okay.
So that's coming up shortly.
Yeah, so. Twenty ninth of April?
I think I thought it was me, but.
I think it's me, I'm pretty sure.
So if. You wanna attend that, please let me know and the city will make the arrangements to pay the webinar fees and such, and then we'll send you the connecting information.
Cause I know, I know now that they're all, there are one day seminar, I'm assuming there'll be that as a webinar too, right Barb?
I would hope so. I think that I know our clerk training school just went to virtual only this year too, so.
So it's a one day seminar, it's on a Friday and it probably starts at eight thirty, I'm guessing, and it runs until about four, four thirty, so.
Yeah, but I think that it's pre taped, so. As you can either listen to it live or you can watch the recorded version, so you can watch it at your leisure.
Okay, that'd be good.
So we will get that information to you as soon as we get that.
They're, they're really helpful to go to, especially for the new people or even the old ones, there's stuff that is brought up that, you know, we might not be aware of or forgot about, so they're really helpful.
They also give a very nice legislative update that kind of lets you know what's some up and coming legislation that may impact municipalities and things to be on the lookout for.
Okay, next is a public hearing and I'd like to open the public hearing for the Community Development Black Grant. Put that on the floor.
Yeah, I did. Log out and log back in on my computer here and I don't see anybody that logged in through the other number, so. I've got it open here. Hopefully they saw.
Mayor. Mayor, if I could just go through a few things that I need.
Go ahead, Dave.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm not hearing you, Dave.
Are you there?
Okay. I know that. He's by phone, might be through the computer, I don't know. We lost you, Dave, so should I just read your, I'll just read your red writing, maybe you'll email me. Logged out, he's probably gonna try back in. He did want to have me read some of this stuff in case he didn't make it on. Maybe this is him again, let's see. Let's see him.
I think that was Leon leaving.
Okay. So this is a CDBG program. This is something that we did a year ago and if you recall, we did not get the grant. There was a missing piece of paper, so we're doing it again. So CDBG was enacted through the Housing and Community Development Act of nineteen seventy-four. The Wisconsin Department of Administration has administered. CDBG funds since nineteen eighty-two. Its goals include benefit to low to moderate income households, target funding to areas of greatest need. Housing, public facilities, which we're talking about now, and economic development. So this is regarding the well that we're discussing this. Identification of Total Potential Funds, DOA historically receives approximately twenty-eight million dollars in general revenue per year for housing rehabilitation. Public infrastructure improvements, water, sewer, storm sewer, et cetera. Emergency infrastructure and economic development in exchange for job creation. Approximately ten million dollars would be available in this year's cycle. Public facilities competition, if awarded, the CDBG can fund two dollars for every dollar of match up to a maximum of one million dollars. And in this, you can, economic development includes low interest loans to businesses in exchange for job creation. Public facilities includes water facilities, including mains, looping, extension, treatment sources, hydrants, valves, sewages. Including collector and interceptor mains, lift stations, treatment plants and lagoons, dechlorination facilities, storm sewers, fire stations, libraries, senior centers. Handicapped accessibility and community centers. Public facilities for economic development, including business or industrial park water systems, sewage systems, roads, infrastructure, et cetera. Here he's trying to get back on. Planning Grants?
Yep, I'm.
Okay, I got all the way up to your planning grant section, I read everything.
Okay, very good.
You want me to?
I apologize. You're doing a great job. I, I, I can continue if you like. You know, some of the other eligible activities are the Housing Rehab Program, which is for owner occupied and renter occupied. Housing rehab for LMI, Low to Moderate Income Owners and landlords that, that do rent to LMI tenants. And then the final program that they have, which is related to the, the city and their application this year is the CDBG Close Program. And. That program is, has been around for a couple of years. What it was is the. Economic Development revolving loan fund programs that many communities and counties had. Which were originally economic development, CDBG Economic Development Loans. They were grants to the communities, loan to the businesses, as the business paid those loans back. Then they would, the community and the county would go ahead and turn around that money and loan that out again. But a couple of years ago HUD came and audited the DOA. And there was about a hundred million dollars of funds just basically in fund balances and in accounts receivable. Or loans receivable, so HUD. Pretty much ordered the Department of Administration to, to use up that money. They didn't want that money sitting in, in, in accounts. And so they developed this CDBG Close Program, which again would use those dollars that were. In those fund balances and those loan receivables and use them for, if they were federalized funds. Meaning after nineteen ninety-four, if they were awarded after nineteen ninety-four. They would then be federalized and those funds would have to go towards a. A CDBG eligible project, so. Those funds have to be committed by January thirty-first of twenty twenty-one or the community or the county loses it. And in your application that we're proposing to submit this year. Winnebago County is anticipating approximately a hundred and thirty thousand, I don't know if that's changed at all, Linda. It's the same, okay, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars of the Winnebago County CDBG Closed Funds to be used in conjunction with the city's project. So at this time, we'll just kind of open it up to the council and the public. Any comments that you might have on the program or the proposed project that we're looking at, which is again, the wellhouse and water treatment. Project that we're anticipating. The applications this year are due June twenty-fifth. They did move it back from May fourteenth. Because of the COVID nineteen, they did extend that deadline date to June twenty-fifth.
Any, any comments from the aldermen or citizens? I guess you explained it well.
Well, Linda did.
Linda did too.
Okay, team.
Well, if not, we can close the public hearing then, right?
Has the city had anyone approach them, like in the community, looking to be a part of this?
A part of?
Are there?
Part of the public hearing?
Yeah.
No, no.
Okay.
So I guess we'll, anybody else have any more comments? If not, we'll close the public hearing. And then move on. Okay, next, committee meetings, Finance and Personnel, Cindy.
Yes.
You guys some resolutions that have to be addressed?
First, before the resolutions, she just can announce the resignations.
Oh, okay.
Did you, if you want Joe to do that, Cindy, he can do that.
That would be great, cause I'm not, I don't have everything, I can't get two screens up.
Yeah, it's fine.
As far as reading them or just explaining them?
Explaining them, please.
Matt Portell has taken a position with the Brown County Sheriff's Department. He has been living up in Green Bay. With his significant other for probably two months now and making the commute. He's been very open that he has intentions to move up there and. He was given the offer from Brown County and accepted it and they gave us a whole eighteen day notice, so. Matt was full time with our department. And Jason Eke also turned in his resignation. He was part time, he accepted a full time position with the City of Minasha Police Department. The good news is that they both were fitted with new. Bullet resistant vests and both Brown County and the City of Minasha are gonna reimburse us for them costs. So we don't lose money there. But we're actively in the hiring process again.
Okay, any questions for Joel on that? If not, next is. COVID nineteen policy and procedures, is that Joel too then?
I know that would be me. This is from the, this is from the workshop, so. The only thing that we need to talk about is, we'll need a motion on moving forward with the loan program that we discussed with the fifty thousand dollars to. Start us out at twenty-five hundred dollars per business loan, zero percent interest. Two years, no payment, third year fifty percent at the beginning of the third year, fifty percent at the end of the third year, being paid back. That makes sense.
So can we have a motion?
Motion.
We have a motion for that. A second? Second. Any more discussion?
Where is this money coming from exactly, Linda?
Oh, I'm sorry, this money is to come from the emergency reserve that we set aside, so we have. A policy with the city that states we have to have. Basically rainy day funds, but we call them general fund, fund balance. Equal to seventy percent, I'm trying to remember, I think it's seventy percent of our revenues. And. Anything above and beyond that at the end of each year is then taken and split into two, so. We take half of it and we put it in a capital purchases fund, so say we need a backhoe instead of borrowing for it. If there's money sitting in this fund, we can ask the council, can we use that for that backhoe? And then the other half is put into a emergency reserve or. Budget stabilization, so if there is an emergency such as COVID nineteen. Or if we get to budget time and we say, we don't want to raise taxes that much because we have this money sitting here that can offset. Some of our expenses, we can then, the council can then make the decision to spend that money. So what I'm hearing from the auditors, and I don't have those final audit reports, but even if they're. Not even close, it sounds like we have a significant fund balance going into twenty twenty. Which is a good thing because first of all, we can do something like this for our businesses and second of all, with the loss of revenues that we're anticipating. And second of all, with the loss of revenues that we're anticipating and things like fines and interest and rentals for rooms and for park shelters and so on, we can use some of that money if we need it to balance our budget for this year.
Thank you.
Any more, any more questions for Linda? If not, a roll call, please.
Can I ask first who made the motion?
Simromantic.
Okay, thank you.
Todd, who seconded?
Todd Jerry, that's what I got. I'm just going off voice because I can't see you guys. Roll call, Todd Jerry? Cindy, Cindy Ostrander?
Hi.
Todd Simromantic?
Hi.
James Brash?
Hi.
Jason Reeves?
Hi.
And Tim Doolittle?
Hi.
Motion carried. Cindy, can you go on with the expenditures? You got them?
Yes.
Otherwise I could pull the agenda up if you need it.
I can also do that for you guys. I'm in the agenda right now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the first resolution is Resolution 200421-1, expenditures.
So Cindy, you can put that on the floor and then whoever can second.
Say again? We have a motion and a second. It's open for discussion on the bills. No questions on the bills? If not, roll call, please.
Todd Simromantic?
Hi.
James Brash?
Hi.
Jason Reeves?
Hi.
Tim Doolittle?
Hi.
Todd Jerry?
Hi.
And Cindy Ostrander?
Hi.
Motion carried. Next.
Are we with the cash disbursements? Is that all part of it?
No, we're up to the next one. That cash disbursements were just the list that go along with that last resolution you did.
Thank you. So then it would be?
Resolution 200421-2, authorizing resolution for the submission of the Community Development Grant.
I think she sees him now.
Yes, I do.
All right, thank you.
You want to put that motion on the floor, Cindy?
Yes, 200421, authorizing resolution of the submission of the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Second by Todd. Discussion. Did we clarify everything in the public hearing or the public?
There was one question I had. Was this part of housing rehab too? Was that what he was talking about?
It can be. You can get grants for housing as this, but this one that we're asking for is completely to do with the well and the wellhouse.
Okay, just that.
We have a housing grant that we do have.
Do we still have to have a community member to join this board? So are we going to have, we'll have to have additional discussion on this as people become available, right? Or is it only if it's the housing part, you have to have community members?
I don't think we need a board for this, do we, Dave?
No, you don't need a board for this. This is city council action on submitting the application itself.
Yeah, and then as far as the housing, housing grant goes, we are going to be dismantling the housing grant committee and just making it the planning commission because they haven't met in about four years.
Right, yeah.
Any more, any more discussion? If not, roll call, please.
James Brash?
Hi.
Jason Reeves?
Hi.
Tim Doolittle?
Hi.
Todd Jerry?
Hi.
Cindy Ostrander?
Hi.
And Todd Simromantic?
Hi.
Motion carried. Next, Cindy?
Okay, Resolution 200421-3, resolution, providing a guarantee of matching funds for the CDBG PF application.
Say again? Motion and a second. Discussion.
So Jason seconded that. This one, we have already done the borrowing for the well, so it's kind of a no brainer.
Yeah, this is, if I might add, as part of the application, we try to get as many points as possible. This is an optional resolution, but it's recommended, highly recommended by the Department of Administration. We're hoping that with the safe drinking water loan that we already have, with the commitment of the CDBG Closed Funds and this resolution, we will have the required match for the CDBG Public Facilities Grant. And hopefully we'll score 40 points. Typically, in a situation like this, when we have this resolution and those commitments, we will score 40 of 40 points.
Okay, any more discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Jason Reeves?
Hi.
Tim Doolittle?
Hi.
Todd Jerry?
Hi.
Cindy Ostrander?
Hi.
Todd Simromantic?
Hi.
And James Brash?
Hi.
Motion carried. So are we done with Dave then, Linda?
I believe so.
Dave, thanks.
Very good. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
All right, thanks, Dave.
Good night.
Good night.
Next one, Cindy?
Resolution 200421-4, awards of bids for Lincoln Avenue culvert replacement to Robert J. Emel excavate, excavating in the amount of 62, 62,973,50.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion, Steve or Linda or who?
Dave.
Dave.
Unmute.
There we go. Yeah, so this is two for the new council members. This is on Lincoln Avenue, just past the pool. As you make the turn, the little curve in the road, there's three culverts that go under, under Lincoln Avenue that we're starting to get sinkholes in the road because the joints are separating. So we're going to be replacing those culverts. The original engineering estimates when this project started were around $99,000. So when it went out for bids and it came in here at almost $63,000, that's, that's a very good price. So they're hoping to start, they have to wait till after the middle of June to start. So frogs or something can migrate through those culverts first and then they're good to go.
Okay, anybody else for input? If not, roll call, please, Bart.
Tim Doolittle?
Hi.
Todd Jerry?
Hi.
Cindy Ostrander?
Hi.
Todd Simromantic?
Hi.
James Brash?
Hi.
And Jason Reeves?
Hi.
Motion carried. Okay, thanks, Cindy. Next is public safety. Are we missing something? No, public safety, Todd? He's muted. Todd?
All right, yep.
Public safety report.
I'm looking at the monthly tickets issued. Is that correct? Or?
If there's anything that you want to talk about that's in the packet, otherwise you can have Joe do a presentation on it if you want.
I think that's the best idea. Joe, can you do a presentation for it?
Well, it's just like all the last ones, it just shows there are monthly tickets in there. Court, all the court information and stuff like that. Obviously, our stops, our traffic stops are way down, like our traffic counts way down. Our calls are starting to increase, so I don't know if that's because of the virus that people are getting the cabin fever, but our calls are starting to go back up now. Like I said earlier, we are starting hiring process for the full time position and one part time position. And the, we actually have about 10 applications already. And I would say half of them are very good candidates. I think we're going to get this done at the right time because from what I'm hearing, they're canceling the June academies. So there's going to be a lot of agencies looking for, people who are already employed, just because they're not getting the new kids out of school because of the virus. So hopefully we can wrap ours up in time before someone else scoops them up on us. So, so we're busy with that.
Okay, any questions for Joel?
Joe, are you guys still doing the daily police car cleaning and all that stuff? And you have the masks and everything for the officers?
Yep, I actually picked up another, some, I guess you call them Tyvek suits and some more gloves from emergency management today. We're very, we're doing very well on gloves. We got a lot of gloves and we have plenty of masks right now. The community's been very generous to donate. We received several donations. So yeah, the police department continues to be wiped down every morning. Squads are detailed every day at the end of shift. So yeah, we're doing everything we can to protect us.
Okay, any other questions? If not, public works, Todd?
Looks like, of course, monthly report is in your packet and we have a well update. Anything to elaborate on that?
Yeah, they, they pumped the well a couple of weeks ago again because to see if they could eliminate some of the sand and clay particles. It did start to get better, but it's still not to the, it's not to the point where it should be. So they're going to come back this week now. And they're going to try a different method is they're going to inject air into the well to actually surge it. So it's going to like push air in, let the air out. So all the sediment comes back and pump it. And they're hoping that'll, that'll clean up the well to the point now where it's going to be good to go and usable water. So it's just more, more testing needs to be done. So that's, that's where that's sitting right now.
Now, does this, does this keep on tallying up a bill for us? How does that work?
In the original, the engineers did put in for this type of work to be done. They put in so many hours. We are reaching the limit, getting close to it. And we're probably going to go over because Sam's well drilling charges roughly, I think he said, $350 an hour extra now, once, once we reach those original bid estimates. So, but I guess, you know, we can't stop now. We're hoping this week should clear it up. And if it doesn't, more discussion.
Okay, anything else from anybody else? If not, utilities, Tim?
Your information is in your packet. Anybody has any questions? Steve is here to answer them.
Guess not. Okay, moving on, parks, Jason?
Ice rink was drained and stored, new liner ordered, delivered for next winter, new LED lights outside of the OA building. Playground equipment's been cut off and some boards replaced on boat docks in the parks. Unless Steve wants to elaborate on anything.
Not so far. Like we've only opened two of the restrooms so far. So Scott Park, the Lower Pavilion and Sterns Park Restrooms are all that we're going to have open for now. The rest of them, we did turn the water on in case, you know, things get better, that we're ready to go. But as of right now, it's just going to be those two restrooms are going to be open, so.
I did notice the Scott Park, the yellow caution tape has kind of fallen off every once in a while. Has there been any evidence of people trying to use it or is that just weather related?
It's, it's, it's not the best, you know, caution tape is just meant for, you know, not, not long term use. So we tie it back together and pretty soon we'll be replacing it with new stuff. So yeah, nobody's, nobody's down there using it that I know of. So we have a sign up, you know, we put signs saying why it's closed. So I hope, hopefully people understand.
Okay, any more questions? Okay, if not, we'll move on to libraries, Cindy.
Yes, the packet's in your, in, online. So if you have any questions, Julie is available.
Anything for Julie? Any comments, Julie?
I do. We had a meeting last night, there was a lot of, yesterday, I mean, there was a lot of discussion about some things are up, some uses up, some is down, believe it or not. Well, the down ones, you know why, but some are up. Julie could answer that a lot better.
A lot of our online services have gone up, obviously. We've added some to Hoopla and Ancestry from Home. And there's a couple of other ones, Tumble Books are all home services that you can get through your devices, just to try and fill the needs of our patrons. Lately, we're just gearing up for our curbside again, starting next week. So we've been working with that, trying to figure out our summer reading program, what we can do and how we can safely do something like that again. Take it day by day.
I have a question for Julie. Has there been any discussion of the interlibrary loans working out some way? Or is it basically just fend for yourself and your own city?
They are in discussion on opening that back up again. And I think they are waiting for the DPI to give them some directives. And a couple of other library organizations giving them directions on how to safely do that. But there is talk of getting that going again. Well, time will tell when and how they're going to do that.
Okay. Anybody else? If not, Community Development, Cindy?
All right. The packets?
There's none there?
No.
Nothing there?
Stephanie can talk though.
Steph? Anything to say, Steph?
Not a whole lot, just working with the businesses, trying to promote the businesses, working on, work, sorry, I have a loose kid. It was good up until about two minutes ago and then, then one came in. Yeah, so working with businesses, promoting the business, like all the businesses and working on events, figuring out what we're going to do since everything's pretty much postponed.
Any comments on the Easter egg thing, how it went?
It was good. We got a lot of good feedback, but people think we're going to do it again next year. But it was really just to bring Easter to people when they can't get out. So we'll see.
Okay, good job. Anything else for Steph? If not, administration, Linda?
Okay, you know, the elections was quite, quite time consuming here in the offices with all the absentee ballots and the absentee walk-ins. So that took up quite a bit of our last month. Barbie really had a lot on her hands there. And then most of us from the offices, except we left Jan here to answer phones, but the rest of us all worked down at the polls all day from morning till night. So, and then cleaned that up, of course, a week later. And there was some struggles, but we got through it and it, we came out all right in the end. So hopefully the next one won't be quite so difficult and we can do it the usual way. The other thing is, at the planning commission meeting, we did approve an, moving forward with an annexation for the land just east of town on Highway 21, right across from the Schwab mobile, what do you call that, campground? And that land is going to be purchased by QuickTrip and joined to the city land that, that's just east of Brook Avenue. east of Brook Avenue. I do not know if they'll keep the QuickTrip downtown. At this point, they're saying they are and they're actually doing some work on their tanks and everything. So the hope is that that remains where it's at, but who knows? So that's a big job because there's a ton of work that has to be done to get that annexation in place, including certified survey maps, developers agreements. TIF amendment. There's a lot going on with that. So we've got a calendar full that goes all the way into July with several meetings a month on it. So.
And I think they're talking next spring, breaking ground, right?
Right, next spring.
Can you clarify that? Is that like the farm field lot or is that the not quite farm field lot? That's the depth of Huckleberry there?
Both.
Okay.
Where the buildings are right there.
Right. It'll be the portion that's in town and just the, the depth that you're talking about. And then they're going to join it to another piece that's the same, same depth, but about double the width. So they're only taking a portion of that next of that strawberry farm, as we call it, and up to where the building is there. And they're going to extend the street, Huckleberry Street, whatever it is, Huckleberry, they're going to extend the length of the QuickTrip lot and they'll stop it again at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else for Linda? If not, I have something to say. I want to just congratulate the new Judge Kathy Katie and new older persons, Cindy and Todd. I would like to thank everyone for the support on my new role. We're in some difficult times now and it's going to be, I think, a long haul and we will get through this together. I would also like to thank the city staff for being in the front lines, Linda, Jamie, Barb and Jan for keeping the city running. And if you have any questions, you can contact City Hall or Linda or myself. People that are in charge of the committees, they can contact their if you're on public safeties or parks, just contact the person in charge and they'll fill you in before the meeting so that you don't come in, not know what's going on. So don't be afraid to go in and talk to Joel or Steph or whoever. They'll give you the information that you would like or if you have any questions. So anything else from anybody else?
I would.
Yes.
I'd like to welcome the new council members and Cindy, I've been on the library board for a while. So give me a call if you have any questions.
Okay. I'll do that.
And if either one of you want to get on a Zoom call with me or even come in, you can. We can talk about different things like the budget and, and how the numbers work on there and whatever it is we, we can come up with. But we do have, they haven't been updated for a while, but they're probably still really good. City Council orientation packets. So Barbie can send you over that and, and you can look through it. Might help you with some of your questions as well. So. Okay.
Okay, anything else from anybody? If not, motion to adjourn.
I'm most.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion to adjourn? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thanks. Motion carried.
Night, everyone.
Good night.
Bye.